Twenty-third, two thousand twenty to order at five thirty. For those listening, I'm Sarah Messing, President of the Board of Education for Valley Central Schools. Due to the fact that we are in a state of emergency in regards to the coronavirus, our district offices are closed and we are practicing our social distancing. We've decided to hold our board meeting over the phone for the help and safety of our board members and our administration. There will be no public participation this evening and the live audio from this meeting will be streamed on our district Facebook page. I'll take a second to introduce everyone on the call here. We have our superintendent, Mr. Zampis, our deputy superintendent, Mr. Valerosa, our superintendent, Ms. Sarator, our interim business official, Mr. Conklin, our district clerk, Ellen McGoldrick, our media specialist, Patty Bear, and our Board of Education members, Vice President Joseph Bond, and Trump Dean, Art Fitzgerald, Sonia Lewis, Diana Revore, and Mel Westenberg. Sheila Schwartz here going to-
Sarah, Sarah, I am, I called in.
Okay, thank you Sheila, Sheila Schwartz.
Okay.
Before we get started, I'd just like to say thank you to Chris Moore, our Director of Technology, for setting up the meeting. I would also like to say thank you and publicly acknowledge all the efforts and the hard work and the very long hours that our central office staff has put in during the last couple of weeks, guiding our district through this uncharted territory. I think you've done a great job in keeping the community and board up to date on everything that's been going on. And I'm sure I speak for everyone on the board when I say thank you for your leadership and your dedication to Valley Central. I would ask at this time that we take a moment and stand and say the pledge. To the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, to the republic, we are one nation, united ground, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is correspondence. Mr. Zampis, do you have any correspondence?
None this evening.
Do you have any commendations?
I have an honorable mention, the high school, middle school popped concert on March the eleventh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will ask, as we go through the agenda, when you make a motion, please be so and state your name. Next on the agenda is proposed consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda to vote on separately? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda as written?
So moved, Sheila Schwartz.
Thank you Sheila, can I get a second?
A second, that, Joe Bond.
Thank you Joe, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, Sarah Messing, yes? Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Revore?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yeah.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes seven zero to approve the consent agenda. Next up is reports, and I will hand it over to our central administrators for their reports and updates.
Okay, I'm gonna waive my time, I know Mike has some information, I'll let him update you and I'll chime in certainly if there's something to add, I'll pass mine over to Mike.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, so, I'm gonna talk a little bit about the latest that we have from the Health Department. I wanna talk about the meals program, the childcare, and let Mary Ann talk a little bit about the instruction that we've been asked to do. So I first wanna say thank you to all the people in the community, Board of Education, the teachers, the staff, for all the support that they've given us. I think that, obviously, this is something that we've never experienced in our lifetime, but our role, you know, we've been trying to find our role, not just at Valley Central, but district role, and school districts as educational institutions, and I think what's important is that people need confidence in their life, and the school is the big one, and I experienced that firsthand myself with my children, we've only got in sorority for three years, but yesterday, that twelve teachers in car, twelve car of teachers drove by the house here, and, you know, people don't know us very well, and they don't know anything about what I do for a living, but the kids were outside playing, and just to hear the kids call on my children by their first names from car windows, just, you know, I know this is going on all over the country, and I know our teachers are emailing kids, and I think that's the most important thing, is that we let people know that we're, the school is still here, and we're gonna help in every way that we can, and I think that's going on across New York State and across the country, and Valley Central certainly is no different. The latest from the Health Department is there are now four hundred and eleven cases that have been confirmed, that would be a hundred, an increase of a hundred just since yesterday. There are hundreds of tests that are still out, that they have not got results back for yet, and there's hundreds more that are still being done. They're finding, from interviewing the people, that many of them are people who went to work sick, or had to go to the store to pick up some supplies, so unfortunately affecting others, healthcare providers were hit particularly hard, had particularly hard, and workers have gone to work because the Health Department's are short-staffed. They're having trouble catching up, calling people who are quarantined, and investigating new cases. What we learned is that they've changed their protocol a little bit, and this goes to some of the questions you may have been getting. We asked one weekly conference, not weekly, daily conference calls with all the superintendents in Orange County, and on Friday, they asked if any superintendent had gotten a call from the Health Department saying that they had a positive, and the answer was no, not one superintendent or fourteen of them on that call. And I know since then, some have gotten that, but mainly the ones on the call said, no, they found out about it because their employees or parents let them know, or through social media, so it's very hard to confirm. But what we did know about the change in protocol is now, what the Health Department's doing is they're starting, they're asking, when was the onset of symptoms, if you were tested positive, and if you were at work or were in school, when that happened, they use that as a guide to determine who they need to notify, and they investigate going forward from there. But again, with all the number of cases that they have, I think it's been very difficult for them to do that. You know, are there people in the Valley Central School District? We have still not gotten a call from the Health Department that's confirmed anything in the Valley Central School District. We're hearing otherwise, either first or second-hand contact, not an astronomical number, but we're, you know, I think we'd be naive to believe that there aren't some. But again, when those symptoms started, we wouldn't know that, and even if we did, I don't know how much value that would be for us at this point, since we've been out of school for quite a while now. I wanna, I guess, some of the concerns that relate to you from superintendent's call, there's no word yet on extending the governor's April first deadline, so what he did was close the schools until April one, meaning that the one hundred and eighty day requirement is, you're covered, you're excused until April one. Obviously, Valley Central's closed till April fourteenth, a couple of the other districts are as well. Are we hanging out there with the one eighty day requirement? Yes, we are, but we also think, when making that decision, we think people needed to know that, to be able to make plans, that we are gonna be closed through that date. We fully expect that all the schools in New York State are gonna remain closed through that date and beyond, and from all the information we have, it's gonna be a while. And, you know, there's talk that we may not be able to return the rest of the year, but we have no official word on that. State tests are canceled, but there's no word on the Regis exam. One of the superintendents brought up the point, if they expected, I don't know, if it's an arbitrary date of May first, that we were able to come back to school, would the kids be able to provide accommodations? We wanted to know would be made for an exam that should have forty weeks of instruction. If you haven't had forty weeks of instruction, then the tests are already printed. So there's a lot of questions they have over that. They had questions, a lot of questions on special education and services that are, there are no good answers to, a lot of questions on meal programs, I'll talk about ours in a second, a lot of questions about employees, hourly, sick time, bus drivers, labor issues. Guidance, there's no guidance at all on what happens if this was on for a while, in terms of instruction or learning, continued learning. They, I can tell you, we've submitted four plans, one was our emergency closing plan, this is all the SED, one was our food plan, one was our continuing learning plan, and one was our childcare plan. After we, after the deadline for the childcare plan, the state came out with new guidance, screw the childcare plan, about eleven o'clock that night, and we were supposed to have it submitted by five. What they said, we asked the question was, who is gonna review these plans, because all we got was knowledge meant that they'd been submitted. We got back as an answer from the interim Commissioner of Education, that they are training people right now to learn how to review those plans, so if there are corrections you need to make, they'll get back to us on it. As far as our meal program is concerned, I'll talk a little bit about that. Eleanor Mills and Barbara Gravel and their staff and their volunteers that they, groups that they put together have been unbelievable. You know, I think our plan and John Conway, I know Nessie was on the call, is incredible. I mean, you compare it to the other schools and what they did, we're feeding kids five days a week, we're gonna extend it over Easter break as well, we'll feed families over Easter break. The first two days, when we began this, we're four hundred and four hundred plus. Friday, I don't have today's statistics, but I can give you Friday's, we added this site at Sleepy Hollow, there's a Walden, two hundred and two meals, the middle school was two hundred ten, E C and Sleepy Hollow, one hundred and eighty-eight, the A L C, ninety-eight, and that's a total of six hundred and ninety-eight meals on Friday. As I said, we could use about, we could use some volunteers, I spoke to Eleanor today about, you know, if she could get about eight more volunteers, one of our concern is, the governor's projecting, you know, forty to sixty percent of our population in New York State at some point getting sick, and, you know, our concern is, will we be able to sustain this over a long period of time? And, you know, I don't know that our staff can do it without the help of the community, so if there are volunteers, we do, we've already had people step forward, but if you know the people, if you just point them in our direction, we'll make sure Eleanor and Barbara have it. Barbara, in addition to what I just mentioned about the school lunch program, breakfast lunch program, Barbara had the backpack snack attack, that I believe they delivered at seven eleven, if I have that right, on Friday, backpacks from the First Requiem Church in Walden, so she'll be doing that every Friday. She also had the grant that she, grand new, just coincidentally got right in time, there are, I believe there were twelve families identified out of the A L C, that they were able to get some provisions from Cornwall for them, and that was, you know, just a tremendous thing. In terms of childcare, Ryan Mar organized a County Montgomery Emergency Operation Committee. When we knew what we had to do, we put out, you know, the word to them, the daily call, well, at least every other day call with the committee. What we're doing right now is we have to survey online, and exchange some personal emails with people, and we're trying to identify the people that are in need as potential workers, and that list has expanded. You know, gas station dependent, not just healthcare workers, it's people who work in grocery stores, anybody who performs what they deem an essential task that's in need of childcare, what we're trying to do is match them up to providers, so we've had some providers come forward, we've had people come forward, so we're identifying their needs, who they are, and trying to match these people up. As of right now, the direction that we've gotten is that this will be at their expense. Could we get, do, you know, possibly organize some fundraising to help, I guess that's possible, but, you know, that would be something we'd be looking at down the road, it just goes a long time. But that's pretty much what I have, Mary Ann could talk about the instruction a little bit, and then, you know, 'cause that's not a very elaborate piece, I mean, she's done a tremendous job in organizing the principal, I'm sure she's gonna be very modest about this, but there's no way that I could have done what she did, and she really deserves a lot of credit for her leadership on this, and then if you have any questions, we either one of us will do our best to answer. So, Mary Ann.
Just before Mary Ann starts, can I just add about one thing that Mike mentioned too, but I think it's worth repeating, is about, we're the only school district, or one of the few, not even a handful, I think it's down to a few, that are, at this point, providing five, five days a week. I believe, I know we're the only school district that is not just continuing the backpack, snack attack, but they also, Barbara and with the help of Ryan's guys, were able to deliver right to each house, and there was a hundred and eleven families, I think as Mike mentioned, and a hundred and forty-three lunches are backpacks for the weekend, so that's extraordinary work on the part of Valley Central School District, and I just wanna mention that and thank everybody for that work, if that's not happening anywhere around this county at that level. Thanks.
Hi, everybody.
Mary Ann, you're on.
Okay. Thanks again for all your support, I have to say that these circumstances have really shown me what our Valley Central teachers and administrators are all about, so just to give you a little bit of an update, our staff was sent home last Thursday, we joined forces on the Monday before the weekend break, and we sat with administrators and we kinda saw this coming, so we started to provide materials at that time. So as of right now, all teachers have been instructed that they must provide meaningful learning activities to their students on a weekly basis, and that these activities can't just be anything random, there needs to be a goal and objective in mind, and that they should be relevant to something that is current or a past unit of instruction. At this time, we are not providing new instruction. We also have asked them to be sure that they are communicating with parents and students on a regular basis. We have instructed them that Google Suite is our preferred platform for communicating, however, we did allow other platforms such as Zoom, because there was many teachers that were asking for that. Right now, Kristina Durevsky is working full-time, giving support to all these teachers to make sure that they know how to work with these offline platforms, as well as the administrators, our administrators have all had some type of faculty meeting or data meeting, or grade level meeting with their staff as of today. We've also let teachers know that email is an acceptable form, so if they want to be emailing parents on a daily basis while they get their Google classrooms up and running, they may use the email as well. In addition, if you go to my, to my Valley Central website, Patty has done an amazing job helping me to make sure that we have all our resources online, so there are resources for the elementary, the middle, the high school, we have been adding P E, library, art, music, and social emotional resources. We've gotten several emails from parents letting us know that they are either happy or need other types of communication, and we've been able to meet those. Every student has been provided with a Chromebook if they did not have access. Today, we had a few more trickle-ins, so we are making arrangements for them to put those up tomorrow. I did have a conference call with all of the assistant superintendents for instructions today, and I have to say that I feel like Valley Central has been a very good place. There are some districts that at this time have decided to do nothing at all, and they are waiting. One of the reasons for that is that if we provide new instruction, right now, the guidance looks like if we are to do that, then we need to make sure that we are providing the modifications and the accommodations for all of our special ed students, and that is just not possible for us to do remotely. I have been in contact with our special ed lawyer, and with Barbara and Georgia, who are at this time conducting C F E meetings remotely. We are looking at doing program reviews, once we have a better understanding of how long this closure is going to last. We do know that we will be required to make up some of the services for students, O G P C and the such, and we are putting a plan together to do that, it's just gonna depend on how long the closure is. Again, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah, any questions on any of it, guys, I know it's a lot of information, but we'll do the best we can to fill in blanks for you.
Mr. Allen, do you have any questions? Joe, do you have any questions?
Oh, no, sorry, I do not.
Art?
No questions, great job by our staff, one's one.
Sonia?
Um, no questions, just a comment, I just wanted to say I've heard from a lot of families that the lunches and stuff like that have been very, very quick and easy and simple, and kudos to all those people that are doing that. You know, definitely, you guys, you know, in this time of what you're facing, we've been, I think the district has done quite a good job, and I wanted to say that on Facebook, I saw the videos of the middle school teachers, you know, just saying hello and checking in with their kids, and I just felt that that was phenomenal.
Thank you, I think that Patty has really been doing a good job of not only putting a lot of our resources on the webpage and getting them out, but she's doing excellent out of making sure that those same resources are being posted on the Facebook pages for those that use social media.
Thank you, Diana?
I have no questions, I just wanna add also that I think that you all have done a phenomenal job in reinventing the whole wheel of what education is now looking like. So, thank you.
Sheila?
No questions, I just concur with, you know, Diane and Art's comments, you know, you guys have done a great job.
Mel?
Um, no, just a question from Mike about the volunteering for the, for Barbara Gravel, what exactly are they, or for the meals, what exactly are they looking for?
I think she's looking for distribution, and I think what is happening is she wants to put her staff on a, kinda like what they do in the Navy, like a on-or-off schedule, so that if one person gets sick, she doesn't lose a whole staff. So she mentioned if she could have eight people, specifically, she was talking about people at E C and Maybrook, but I think she needs even beyond that. But anybody who's interested, if you point them to me, I'll make sure that Barbara and, I'm sorry, that Eleanor gets her names, and really, I think what she's looking for is group distribution.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you, I would just like to say it's been, my kids have been very excited to hear from all their teachers, and we've gotten tons of emails, we even had a phone call when my daughter was having a hard time getting on one of the platforms, the teacher called to walk her through it, it's just, the outreach from the teachers has been phenomenal, I think, so, thank you, Paula. If there are no other questions on that, then the next thing to report was the Health Safety Wellness Committee meeting, I'm not sure there's anything that really needs to be covered from that at this time. Anybody who is in attendance to that have anything further to report?
Sarah, I'm sorry, Mike, there was very little, we talked a lot about the COVIDs, nothing more than what we've covered here.
Okay, thank you. Anything for community participation that anybody would like to share?
This is Diana, just, the Community Reader Day was the last day of school that was scheduled, and that went very well, there were a lot of people there, the kids were excited to have the readers come in and look up on.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Just wanted to say that the Wednesday conference at the middle school was very well-done and very well-received by the people.
Thanks, Mel. If there's no other further community participation, we will move on to our earth business. First is the budget presentation, and we'll not go over the entire budget presentation over the phone, if that would prove very difficult. A copy of the presentation has been sent to you in your packet, and if you have any questions, please forward them, and we will get all the answers for you. Do you have anything further to add to that at this time, Brett?
Uh, no, not at this time, we're gonna start working with Patty on what we can do to put together some sort of public presentation. Unfortunately, at this time, it looks like getting out of the public meetings is gonna be a little difficult, so we're gonna look at what format we can use to start sharing some information with the public and also have some interaction with the board as well.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is the adoption of a resolution to authorize a special proposition for a capital project, which will be voted on along with our budget on May nineteenth, to include the previously discussed work at the high school, middle school, and the roof repairs at Walden Elementary. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved, Joe.
I'll take Joe Bond, can I get a second?
A second?
Diana?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, any discussion? I will do a roll call vote to vote on this. Sarah Messing, yes? Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mrs. Revore?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you, the motion passes seven zero. Next, we have the adoption of a resolution, the declaration of Walden Elementary School's roof reconstruction project as a secret type-two action. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Diana Rivera, I'll take a second. Mel?
Just Sonia.
Oh, Sonia? Sonia Lewis? Any discussion? I will do a roll call of vote, Sarah Messing, yes? Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Revore?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz? I've lost-
Hello, can you hear me, Sarah?
Yes, I can.
Um, can you just repeat what it was, I lost you for a second and I had to call back in?
The adoption of a resolution, the declaration of Walden Elementary School roof reconstruction as a secret type-two action.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you, motion passes seven zero on that. Next, we have D, the establishment of the two thousand twenty annual meeting procedure, the annual district election, budget vote, and public hearing resolution. This goes over the specifics of the budget vote, which will be proposition number one, the capital project, proposition number two, and the election of chief school board members, Board of Education members, a three-year term, as well as voting requirements and information on absentee ballots. Can I get a motion to approve?
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a second?
This is Art, I'll second.
Thanks, Art. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes, uh, seven zero. Next, we have letter E, adoption of a resolution, the waiver of a conflict of interest with the Valley Central School District and Orange Elster Bocce. Um, this resolution reads, uh, resolves that the Board of Education hereby approves and authorizes the superintendent's school to sign a waiver of potential conflict of interest between Orange Elster Bocce and the Valley Central School District regarding a legal opinion as to whether Bocce's component school districts are obligated to pay Bocce's for all contracted services. Can I get a motion to approve?
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a second?
This is Art, I'll second.
Thank you, Art. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ravor?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes, uh, seven zero. Um, at this time, I will ask for a motion to add a, um, a resolution to the agenda to appoint a, um, an investigator to hear an appeal.
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Joe Bond, can I get a second?
This is Art.
On Art's second, um, I will do a roll call vote to add it to the agenda. Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Ravor?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes, uh, seven zero. Um, at this time, I will ask for a motion to add a, um, a resolution to the agenda to appoint a, um, an investigator to hear an appeal.
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Joe Bond, can I get a second?
This is Art.
On Art's second, um, I will do a roll call vote to add it to the agenda. Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six zero to add the resolution to the agenda. Um, the resolution reads, it resolves that the Board of Education of the Valley Central School District has hereby appoint Ira Mabel at the rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour to hear the appeal of a Title VI investigation determination. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a second?
This is Diana, I'll second.
Thank you, Diana. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes six zero to add the resolution to the agenda. Um, the resolution reads, it resolves that the Board of Education of the Valley Central School District has hereby appoint Ira Mabel at the rate of two hundred and twenty-five dollars per hour to hear the appeal of a Title VI investigation determination. Can I get a motion to approve that resolution?
This is Joe, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a second?
This is Diana, I'll second.
Thank you, Diana. Any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. Uh, Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Ravor?
Yes.
Ms. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, motion passes, uh, six zero to approve that resolution. Um, if there's nothing, uh, at this time, I will, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
This will move, Ms. Schwartz.
Thank you, Sheila. I'll second.
This is Joe, I'll second.
Thank you. I will, uh, do a roll call vote. Sarah Messing, yes. Mr. Bond?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Mr. Westenberg?
Yes.
Motion passes, uh, six zero to adjourn our meeting at six oh six, uh, P M. I just wanna say, uh, thank you again to Chris Moore for setting this up, and, um, to all of our central office staff and the entire Valley Central family that's been working so hard in this crazy time. We appreciate everything that everyone's doing. Uh, thank you, and have a good night.
And Sarah, can I, can I say this one thing? I wanna thank, and I, I appreciate your kind words for everybody, and it absolutely is appropriate, but I just wanna say, and I think I speak, I know you're not supposed to speak for everyone, but I think I do, doing this work is, it's so much, it makes it so much easier, we know that we have such a supportive, uh, board, so, and support from the board, so we thank you all very much for that. Okay?
Thank you.
Have, have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, everyone. Be safe.
Good night.
Stay safe, everybody.
Thank you.
Hi.